Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Glasgow City Council Meeting. If you'll join me, please stand and join me in the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing as Chastity Lowry, Councilman Lowry, will lead us in prayer.
Bow your heads, please. Dear gracious and heavenly Father, dear Lord, we come before you this evening to thank you for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. Dear Lord, we ask that you be with us this evening as we go through the business of the city. Dear Lord, be with our first responders, our servicemen at home and abroad, Lord. We just thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to be here. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Be seated. I will ask Clerk Mona Simmons to call the roll. Present.
Gaunt.
Yes, ma'am.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes, ma'am.
Lowry.
Here.
Marion.
Here.
Neal.
Here.
Norris.
Here.
Trigg.
Here.
Witcher.
All right, we have a quorum, we have 100% attendance. Thank to everybody for being here so we can conduct the business of the city. In your packet on Thursday, you received the proposed city council agenda for tonight's meeting. I would entertain a motion.
Mayor?
Yes?
If I could, can I make a motion to amend the agenda for this evening?
Okay.
To include a presentation by a member from Refuge, Kentucky?
Okay, so I have a request, a motion to amend the budget to allow a person from the agenda, I'm sorry, what I got budget, but I'm not going to amend the budget, I assure you, from Refuge, Kentucky.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Kirkpatrick. Any discussion? All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? So the agenda is amended, and I will move that to the item on the agenda, our swearing in of the two new police officers, a little bit later on in our meeting. Next, we have the approval of the minutes from our council meeting on June the 10th.
Motion, Benell.
Okay, and then?
Second.
Second from Councilman Marion. Okay, is any discussion on those two particular items? All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Next, I will call Police Chief Guy Howey. We have some swearing-in activities to take care of.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. It's my honor and privilege to introduce to you tonight two of the newest Glasgow police officers. And the first officer I'd like to call up is Officer Proctor, or Officer Proctor, if you'll come forward. Joshua was born in Alabama, lived in Tennessee, finally residing in Bowling Green, Kentucky for 20 years. He attended Southern Kentucky Community Technical College and recently graduated from the Department of Criminal Justice Training. He's married to his lovely wife, been married since 22. They moved to Glasgow. She convinced him to continue a career in law enforcement, and here he is, Mayor.
All right. Good to have you tonight, good to have a good crowd witness this for you being sworn in as a Glasgow police officer. You're going to reach to the oath of office. You can respond to it, I'll witness. You ready?
Yes, sir.
Raise your right hand. I, Joshua Proctor, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of this Commonwealth, and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky, that I will faithfully execute to the best of my ability the office of police officer for the city of Glasgow according to law. And I do further solemnly swear that since the adoption of this present Constitution, I have not caused a duel with deadly weapons in the state nor in the country, nor have I accepted the challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have I acted or seconded or carried a challenge, nor aided or assisted any person thus offending or so help me God. I further solemnly swear that I am able to read and write in English language intelligently, that I am sober, moral, and sagacious, that I am least 21 years of age, that I have never been taken as a felony, that as police officer of the city of Glasgow, I will not interfere in any election, that I will endeavor to invest in my ability to protect and prosecute all gamblers and others violating the laws against any. You agree with that? Congratulations. Mayor of this county.
Abigail.
Abigail, okay. We're putting all the pressure now on this. This decision here, right?
Yes.
All right. You can pick, you can pick out. I haven't seen what you want to do. Okay, I say you can sign it. You'll turn this in, congratulations. We have some outstanding recruits from the Glasgow Police Department. You are certainly one of them. Okay, you can take that. Actually, hold on, tell me, send them off. All right, okay, very good. Thank you, sir.
Mayor, Council, I'd like to introduce Mitchell King, Officer Mitchell King. He is a native Kentuckian, born in Bowling Green, Kentucky. Parents are Todd and Melinda King of Glasgow. Officer King has served four years as a combat engineer in the United States Marine Corps with two combat tours in Afghanistan. His wife, his fiancee Heather, is here tonight, and between them, they have five daughters ranging from 16 to eight. Oh, man, I'm sorry. He is very active with the Barren County High School band boosters, where two of their children are members of the Barren County Marching Band. Officer King.
You listen carefully, okay? Raise your right hand. I, Mitchell King, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of this Commonwealth, and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky, that I will faithfully execute to the best of my ability the office of police officer for the city of Glasgow according to law. And I do further solemnly swear that since the adoption of this present Constitution, I have not caused a duel with deadly weapons in the state nor in the country, nor have I accepted the challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have I acted or seconded or carried a challenge, nor aided or assisted any person thus offending or so help me God. I further solemnly swear that I am able to read and write in English language intelligently, that I am sober, moral, and sagacious, that I am least 21 years of age, that I have never been taken as a felony, that as police officer of the city of Glasgow, I will not interfere in any election, that I will endeavor to invest in my ability to protect and prosecute all gamblers and others violating the laws against any. You agree with that over? Congratulations. Some more pressure, isn't it? I think she cried.
Unfortunately, Mayor, he is a Florida Gator fan.
Okay. I have definitely seen him here. Oh, he did. Well, that's enough to make sure you're all.
Any Florida State fans in here?
No. I didn't want anybody to get some fun necessarily. Very good. Another fine recruit from the Glasgow Police Department. Now, I'll sign my name right here, congratulations. We appreciate you all being here for these special ceremonies. Thank you.
All right, let me move on to the next item on the agenda. We amended the agenda to add some guests. I'm going to read some information first. We have a lot of guests here tonight, and we're tickled to death to have each and every one of you here. Before we begin tonight, though, with the action items on the agenda, I do recognize that those of you in attendance that might be here because you're interested in one or more of the items that's on the agenda, topics that may have weighed out to social media over the last few days, things of that nature. One of those issues is what I informally call the cannabis ordinance. That ordinance is on for second reading tonight. There's been much discussion about the ordinance last meeting and when it was read for the first time. The second issue that seems to be floating around social media is the matter of a possible refugee relocation to Glasgow. At this time, I want to share with you what I know and what has transpired over the last few days so that our citizens have the same information as we have. We have three gentlemen here tonight who are going to speak on this. We have Matthew Stevens, he is a realtor here in Glasgow. We also have Daniel Tarnaga, who is with Refuge Bowling Green, and then we also have Brother Ray Woody. Tonight, concerned citizens in attendance may wish to comment on these matters. However, while the Open Meetings Act grants the public the right to attend all public meetings and observe what transpires, the Open Meetings Act in Kentucky certainly does not grant the public a right to speak at a meeting. As such, there will be no public comment as a part of this council meeting tonight. We're just glad you're here to listen as we are going to. Therefore, I am going to ask at this time, as the agenda was amended, Matthew Stevens with Refuge Bowling Green to come and explain what's going on with this particular issue. It's been, this is, we're being responsible before the misinformation turns it into something that's not what it is. And the first thing I want to say is, I'm so glad that these folks came because this is not really a city issue. There is no vote, the city has no say on if somebody comes here or not. They just came to see us to make sure that we were aware that this was going to happen. With that being said, Matthew, you go right ahead and tell us about this.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Refuge Bowling Green is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization offering English-speaking courses, immigration services, job placement, soccer clubs, a driving academy with endorsement from the Kentucky State Police, and disaster recovery from disasters like the tornadoes of December 2022. Yes, ma'am, absolutely. Is that better? No? Just get louder? Okay, I can do that. I'll back up a little bit. Refuge Bowling Green is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization offering English-speaking courses, immigration services, job placement, soccer clubs, a driving academy with endorsement from the Kentucky State Police, and disaster recovery from disasters like the tornadoes of December 2022. Speaking of disasters, our primary clientele are refugees who have experienced some type of major disaster. Refugees are not simple immigrants coming to this country, nor are they illegal aliens. Refugees in South Kentucky have included African Christians fleeing persecution, victims of genocide, those who have opposed communism in their own countries, as well as Afghans who supported the American efforts in their own country in the war but faced extremist violence from ISIS after the evacuation of the United States troops. Make no mistake, refugees believe in the American dream. Moreover, refugees are not a liability to taxpayers at the local, state, or federal level. Unlike the crisis at the border and the socioeconomic problems connected to it, the refugee cost is paid for by the refugee themselves. The International Organization of Migration's main website on their travel loan program states, "The IOM Travel Loan Program helps provide a penalty and interest-free loan to refugees arriving in the United States. Refugees who accept these travel loans are required to sign a promissory note prior to departure committing themselves to repayment of the debt within a determined period after arrival." Again, this is from the front page of a federal website. "The Remote Placement Program aims to connect UN-qualified refugees in areas that are not currently at capacity for refugee support. As such, Refuge Bowling Green is exploring the placement of 30 individuals total from Latin countries. These have been background-checked and vetted. They are in every definition of, in every way of the word, the definition of legal. Given Barren County's growing and vibrant Latino community, combined with Glasgow's heritage of frontier spirit, hard work, community support, this is an ideal relationship. Refuge Bowling Green has secured the support of local churches, corporations, and local companies. In addition to these relationships, Refuge Bowling Green enjoys strong and healthy relationships with the United States Department of State, Kentucky Office of Refugees. We look forward to continuing to facilitate the American dream for those who have faced unspeakable hardship and doing so in a responsible and ethical manner." You said the, go ahead, Mayor.
Go right ahead.
Oh, you had asked me earlier about the obligation with the city, or the county, or the state.
Right.
There is none, there is none. There is not a, there is not a budget request from the city, there's not a funding opportunity with the county or the state. None of these are involved, as you said previously, with the city of Glasgow.
Right, okay. I, now, we also have, Ray Woody is with this organization, and so is Daniel Tarnaga, and I don't know whether, and I also told the council that any council members that wanted to ask a question, please do so, but let's just go ahead and let Daniel and Ray say a word before we open it up for any questions the council might have, because this is, we all need to understand what we're being asked to do because it's being twisted around like crazy.
Can you hear me? Good afternoon. My name is Daniel Tarnaga, and I'm from West Africa. My country is called Burkina Faso. If you don't know Burkina Faso, it is a tiny country close to Mali, or Ivory Coast, or Ghana, or those kind of country. Why have we chosen Glasgow? We're only seeking 30 people. It is not 30 families. The requirement for the city or for you all, what it is, it is zero. We are not asking for anything. In the opposite, the 30 people that we will be bringing here, there will be people that will be contributing to your community. Number one, we are not going to be busing a lot of people and leaving them somewhere outside or somewhere. We're not going to do that. Number two, what do we do? We have a wraparound services that we have been doing since 2013, and we have been very successful at it by serving the local refugees that find home here in the United States. That's all I have for right now.
Ray, do you want to add something to that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and council people, God bless you guys, for giving us an opportunity to bring some clarification to this question. I do know that the meeting we had the other day was a meeting that was, I appreciated the mayor and the chief of police and our sheriff and our county administrator, city administrator. The thoughtful questions they asked were the very questions that many of our citizens are asking, wanting to know about housing, wanting to know about what it would cost the city in order to bring refugees here. There was a clear distinction between refugees and immigrants, and many of these refugees have lived 20, 30 years in refugee camps throughout the world. And so in compliance with our current presidential administration, we're looking to help come alongside these individuals. I think it says a lot about a community, it says a lot about a community about how we treat those who are the most vulnerable among us. And we need to be wise and good stewards of what God has given to us, but at the same time, this organization is not asking the city of Glasgow to contribute financially, but they are looking to train and bring people into this community who I believe will be a benefit to Glasgow.
Thank you, Brother Ray. And also Glasgow Police Chief Guy Howey is familiar with this program, and he was in the meeting that we had last week, which was designed to give us some information. Chief, I would like to hear your take on what was presented at that meeting, sir.
Sure, Mayor. When I first got the letter from Refuge, I had some great concerns about who, what, when, and why, and I contacted them, and they graciously came down for a meeting. And after I got to thinking about all this, the number of illegal immigrants and people that have crossed the border into our country illegally, we have no control over, they are bringing problems to our community. So my first concern was, have these people been vetted? And they have been vetted, I'm told, by the United States government. They are, they've been vetted, they are not convicted criminals. As a matter of fact, I believe some of them are upstand, were upstanding citizens in their communities. And at least, these refugees have a support system in place, and should we have issues, I have somebody to call. I can reach out to these individuals or the churches, and we have a source. So I feel very comfortable with these individuals as opposed to those individuals that are being allowed to cross our borders illegally.
Okay, Mayor.
Chief Howey?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for speaking on this, but I got a question in regards to just your last comment. You said if we have issues, you have a resource to reach out to.
Correct.
So are they, is, the refugees that are coming here, are they not going to be under the law that we all are, that you would be able to take care of the issue?
Correct. So here's what I'm referring to, sir. If, let's say by chance, we have somebody that's stopped on a traffic charge, or there's a disagreement at a store, I have somebody that I can reach out to to help either negotiate it, come get the kids, or whatever. I don't have that ability right now with those people that are undocumented. I have, I have nobody to call except other government officials, whereas now I'll be able to get ahold of possible family members or something of that nature. That doesn't mean that these people, if they're violating the law, are not going to be held accountable for their actions. That's not what I'm saying at all. I'm saying that I have a resource to reach out for their assistance if necessary.
Mayor Ross, if I may ask a question of Matthew, or Ray, or Daniel? The program in Bowling Green, Refuge Bowling Green, that's been in existence, you said, for how long?
So, Refuge Bowling Green has been existing since I got here in the U.S. Myself started, and my wife started the organization. In 2013, we started working with different refugees and immigrants, and in 2018, that's when we become a 501(c)(3).
Okay, okay. And not being familiar with the program, tell us a little bit more about, I mean, you mentioned some of the services that you provide to the community, but can you define that in success or failure?
Sure.
I don't know if that's a good question or not, but how has it worked?
Absolutely. I think it's a great question, I think it's a great question, Councilman. So in that, you have refugees who come in, as mentioned, many of whom have lived in a refugee camp for many years. And so in coming in, we help them assimilate into American culture. And functionally, that looks like driving training, it looks like language training, but it also looks like job placement. So these are, the concern that we often hear is, well, they're taking jobs. These are jobs that are available for application today, and anybody who wants to apply for it can. And so these are jobs that typically go unyielded and unused. I was with a family this morning who works at Tyson and processes chickens at third shift, and those jobs are also still hiring. And so we're able to connect them to employment, to help them achieve gainful income that does a couple of things. One, it gives them integrity of life. Two, it repays the debt. We've already mentioned that. So there is a debt of being here to the federal government. And so they are, those paychecks are actually auto-deducted in order to pay the fullness of the debt, and that helps to reimburse the program in order that the taxpayer is not burdened. Additionally, it creates tax revenue. If you work in Glasgow, you have to pay Glasgow taxes. If you work in Kentucky, you have to pay Kentucky taxes, and if you work in the United States, you have to pay United States taxes. So it provides more income, more revenue for all, everyone involved. They achieve homeownership, they achieve the dream of having a family in a safe community. It's better for the community and income. They learn the language, their children are assimilated as well, and then we are able to really produce growing, vibrant members of society. These are typically growing families with two parents in the family, and typically, we do not have for our refugees, unlike, as Police Chief said, illegal immigration, there's a variety of criminal issues in illegal immigration. For refugees, we deal with language issues as far as these people who have, were working very professionally in their own countries and trying to learn how to do a blue-collar job or something like that. Yes, sir.
Okay. Other questions from members of the council?
So the, just for instance, if there's a situation, a church has two of these folks that they're overseeing, who's responsible on the bottom line, like if they're not paying their bill back or whatever, that kind of thing? Is it the church? Is it the agency?
Or is it, the agency or the individual is the one who endorses the loan commitment?
I see.
And so in that realm, through job placement, that's where they're obligated to do that. There is no, here's one of the most interesting things about the refugee program. There is no entitlement that's tied to this. The chief graciously mentioned, or didn't dive into catch and release with illegal immigrants because there's not a solution to these issues. You're not allowed to hold them. The refugees are required to pay back their loans. There is no entitlement programs that allow them to have housing. That comes through them paying their own rent. So oftentimes, you hear individuals saying, "We don't want to carry the weight of others." You're required to carry your own weight, or you're going to have a very, very difficult time. And the reason that these individuals have been through the vetting process with the United Nations is that they show the most promise to being productive American citizens.
Where have you seen, let's say in Bowling Green, issues?
Refugee issues in Bowling Green?
So what I can say is this, everybody have issues.
Sure.
Many of our refugees fled war. They've been in a refugee camp, like many people were saying, 20, 25 to 30 years before they can have their own numbers to be able to flee their zone and come here. What we have seen, number one, it is a language barrier. That has been tremendous, a big issue, and then that's how we addressing that, by having an English academy. Number two, it is a driving, driving. Many of our folks don't have transportation, they never drove a car before. So what do we do? We create a driving school specific for refugees. They will come in, they will learn the manual to take their test, like I did myself. I got here, I didn't speak no English, and I started learning to become sustainable, to be able to speak. They will go through those steps as well. So we have set up a foundation for the refugees, soon they get here, that the burden will not be on anybody. So we will show them the road to be able to be at least okay.
I'm going to expound them. Had any criminal issues with refugees?
In my knowledge, some of them maybe didn't understand when the police officers stopped them. They get scared because they have never seen those, back in their country, the police officers are not good people. They don't take good care of them, they are taking advantage. So soon they see a police officer coming toward them, they are scared. They say, "Okay, this guy going to take me to jail," and I don't understand why, so they run away. So we had to go and educate and teach them how to, well, the police stop you, put your hand on the steering wheel, give him your ID or anything you need. Those have been type of scenario of issue that we have saw, and those are fixable.
Oh, who is, who's going to be the overseer of Glasgow Barren County?
The overseer of Glasgow Barren County, Refuge Bowling Green as an organization oversees the job placement, oversees the housing in cooperation with the churches and the companies who are looking to hire these individuals. Yes, sir.
Matthew already made this comment that these refugees are coming from a Latin American country. I know- They will come in, they will learn the manual to take the test, like I did myself. I got here, I didn't speak no English. And I started learning to become sustainable, to be able to speak. They will go through those steps as well. So we have set up a foundation for the refugees. Soon they get here, that the burden will not be on anybody. So we will show them the road to be able to be at least okay.
I'm going to expound it. Had any criminal issues with refugees?
In my knowledge, some of we maybe didn't understand when the police officers stopped them. They get scared because they have never seen those. Back in the country, the police officer are not good people. They don't take good care of them. They are taking advantage. So soon they see a police officer coming toward them, they are scared. They say, "Okay, this guy going to take me to jail, and I don't understand why," so they run away. So we had to go and educate and teach them how to, well, the police stop you, put your hand on the steering wheel, give him your ID or anything you need. Those have been type of scenario of issue that we have saw. And those are fixable.
Oh, who is, who's going to be the overseer of Glasgow Baron County?
The overseer of Glasgow Baron County, Refuge Bowling Green as an organization oversees the job placement, oversees the housing in cooperation with the churches and the companies who are looking to hire these individuals. Yes, sir.
Matthew already made this comment that these refugees are coming from a Latin American country. I know there was some concern about refugees from Afghanistan and so forth. That's not the case at all in this situation. And within the context of caring well for these families, we look to partner with the network of churches within our community across denominational lines to be able to minister well to these families and help them become a profitable part of our community.
Other questions?
Woody, I think you answered one of the questions that I had, is how would this work? So it's going to be orchestrated through churches, correct?
That would be our primary mechanism, where we can partner a family with a family that's in a local congregation. And most often, that local congregation as a whole will minister well to that family.
That's where my mind was going before this takes place. Or basically, when? When are we talking? When does this happen?
Nothing's finalized yet. So this is, there's been executive order. There's refugees who are in the portal and things like that. So as we work through this, we don't have a firm date, "Hey, be careful. You're going to have more taco trucks next Thursday." That's not, we don't, that's not necessarily the case. But it's a process that could be ongoing over the next twelve months.
Over the next, I'm sorry?
Twelve months.
Twelve months, and you said thirty?
Thirty individuals, yes, ma'am. Thirty individuals.
Okay, so you've answered the what, where, when. How was Glasgow chosen?
How is Glasgow chosen?
Yes. That is a very good question. Number one is this, for the past, since 2013, my job was to find job placement all around the state of Kentucky. And I start, I start working with several partners and several churches especially. Everything started when we came here to do a training, a refugee simulation training. We trained the churches to understand how to walk alongside and minister with refugee community. And then by doing those, it was so much impactful that we already find people in the church that was already doing the work outside of Glasgow. So by praying and making sure that all those things are happening, where we say, "How about we talk to the church and say, 'Would you guys be willing to partner with us for this thirty family?' They say, "Yes, that's something that we would love to do and serve." And at the same time, I was talking about job placement. I have created already several partnerships with different job placements in Glasgow and in other states as well, so that we can place people there. But Glasgow had been a welcoming, I can say, number one, a very welcoming community. Anytime that I came here, I have never been stopped. People would say hello to me. People would welcome me. Anytime I go to a gas station, nobody ever looked at me like, "What are you doing here? You don't belong here." These has been things that my heart desired. The people that we're trying to bring to your community, they're not thieves. They're not people that steal. Some of them may be doctors that spend many, many years as a doctor in their own country. Some of them may be lawyers that spend many, many years in their country practicing law. Because of bad things that happen in their country, they can't do anymore. They're looking for place to call home. Those have been things that we have been working on. And that's why, why we chose Glasgow.
I can see that you're very passionate about that. And just one last question, how does this process work? Are the churches united with the refugees in Bowling Green and getting their jobs and transportation and language all taken care of before they come? Or do they come here and they're homeless?
There's not a sense of coming here and being homeless. There's a temporary housing that still goes to that debt to be repaid. And so in that realm, it's a very quick process. So the churches do church work extremely well. But that's not so much job placement. So we lean on the employment agencies. We lean on our HR contacts throughout the facilities, corporations, companies, factories, warehouses in Baron County who are looking and encouraging us to apply for these jobs immediately. Because we have a very, very short amount of time in order to see these individuals succeed. So the churches' aspect is going to be more along the lines of cultural assimilation, understanding life in Baron County, understanding the language. But job placement is going to really be in the economic side of things as well. So that's why the cooperation is so important. It's because the church can't do everything, and neither can the organization. So we're continuing to implement and request more individuals and churches to be involved as we collaborate together. Yes, ma'am.
Matthew, you talked about three things, jobs, Bowling Green, and religion. That being said, you know, coming to Glasgow with thirty people, what I'm hearing is Bowling Green's flooded with them. Is that correct?
No, sir. No, sir. That's not the case. So the aspect of this program is in order to place people where there is not currently existing refugee work. And then on top of that, where there is an existing community that is similar to their own. We have a very healthy Latin American community in Bowling Green. And so in the same way that most Americans wouldn't want to be dropped off in any city in the world that no one speaks your language, no one understands where you come from, no one has the same type of favorite food that you do, anybody else feels the same way. And so in that realm, having thirty Latin American individuals who are looking for success, this is...
This is a serious meeting. It's to be taken as such. Listen to the speaker.
Thanks, sir. So in doing so, it's not so much that Bowling Green has met a capacity or has had a quota, but it's more along the lines of, these individuals have been through the United Nations vetting process. They are Latin American. Where is there a Latin American opportunity that could benefit from the settlement of these types of individuals? And considering Glasgow's warm heritage and our Latin American culture that we have that is growing and healthy and stable, that's part of the reason Glasgow was chosen.
So another thing, are these refugees all Christian-based?
Well, I've never met them, sir. So I haven't spoke to them. So their culture is going to, their Latin American culture, so...
Maybe that might be a correct question for Ray. He has a connection with them.
Sure.
Yeah. Much like Matthew said, we've not met these individuals. While the ultimate goal of any pastor would to see them to come to faith in Christ, we respect people where they are in their journey. And so we're confident that there will be some that will come that will not share a Christian conviction. Our command from Christ is to minister to people's basic needs, to present the claims of the gospel, and to trust that God will deal with their heart. But we want to respect people wherever they are in the journey.
All right. Any other questions from anybody? We've got three guests here that can, and there's just a lot of chatter about this.
Yeah, Matthew, I'll ask a couple of questions. The, is that the reason for the timeline not being set is just to make sure that we get all the wraparound services, jobs?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Much, much like any major process, things move at the speed of paperwork. And so to have everything lined out, to have everything in place for success, the field has to be sowed, cultivated. Employers have to be contacted and things like that. As we don't want, we don't want people showing up and saying, "Well, we don't have anywhere for you to go. We don't have anywhere for you to live. There's nowhere to rent. There's no jobs for you. Oh, no. What did we do here?" So we want to make sure that we're lining up these individuals for success and the community for a massive benefit.
And we would want that as a community to set them up for success. I think part of, some of the questions I've gotten through the day, many of them, but is, is this going to be thirty of three hundred coming? Or is this thirty, and then we would come back before another group?
It's thirty individuals is all that's been approved in this action.
But if it became more than thirty, we would come back and, or y'all would have a discussion with the Police Chief?
Sure, yeah. We have no, we have no reason to believe there's more than thirty individuals at this time.
And I'll make this statement, just because I'm familiar with the refugee in Bowling Green, sir. And I mean, y'all do a great job down there. And I appreciate what you do. I think sometimes we all get sucked into the TV stations of, "These people are coming over to murder us." But I have no idea how many refugees are in Bowling Green. But there's a huge community. One of those things that stuck out to me was I went to Briarwood Elementary a couple of years ago. There was twenty-six countries represented in that one elementary school of different people. So, you know, I commend you for what you're doing. I appreciate y'all going through it slow. I appreciate you letting us know, be able to ask questions because there is a lot of misinformation. But I'd be glad to help for me, not from the city, but for me anywhere.
Good. Thanks, sir.
All right. I think that completes the discussion. Our four speakers have spoken, and everybody's had an opportunity to ask questions. So I thank you all for taking the time to come to make sure that everybody understands what's on the table. And we want to understand as a community what's coming.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
You all have a good evening. Let's see, we have up next, the annual department presentations. Next on the agenda, we have codes enforcement. So I'm going to have codes enforcement come forward. Cheryl Pena is our Director of Codes Enforcement. And she's going to present her annual report. No. That's not the way that public meetings work. Well, the First Amendment doesn't apply to city meetings. And that's all, that's all we're talking about. That's it.
I'm just giving it long enough to warm up the light there. Let me do that. Hi, everybody. I'm Cheryl Pena, the Code Enforcement Officer for the City of Glasgow. I know y'all have, each one of y'all have probably at some time or another gotten calls about me. I like to say that if y'all aren't, I'm not doing my job. So I hope y'all understand that. So what is code enforcement? Code enforcement protects the health, safety, and welfare of our citizens by preventing blight in our neighborhoods. We expose property maintenance violations, substandard structures... Am I not loud enough? Open storage, tall grass and weeds. The process that we go through is a citizen will call in with a complaint. An officer, an officer goes out and verifies that the complaint is valid. We make contact and leave a brochure or a door hanger. We go back out about a week later and see if it's fixed. If not, then we can send out notices and citations. There is always a way to combat that. Citations can be appealed. If nothing is being done, we can abate the nuisance, like go and get the grass mowed or something. And then if we have to do that, then we can file liens against the property. Some of the violations are grass. Our ordinance states that it has to be under eight inches tall. Accessory buildings. I just had one the other day where the, not just this one, but another garage, it had holes in the ceiling. It was about to fall down. So we got, the owner knocked it down and fixed whatever he had to fix. Open storage, it can be building supplies. It can be tires, cans, just things that are piled out by your house. Dilapidated housing, when that happens, sometimes I have to go out and board them up because some of the homeless will start going in there, or people on drugs go in there, and they start stripping out the electrical or the pipes and stuff like that. So I have contract to get them boarded up. And then, of course, tires. The cases we've had for this last year totaled four hundred and thirty-six. Still had sixty-three active at the time I made this presentation. I've sent out two hundred and forty-three letters, notices of violations. And out of those, I've had to send out a hundred and fifty-three citations. We've had about thirteen demolitions in town total. That includes the Dollar Store. That includes warehouses and other things and businesses. But eight of them have been residential. Who makes the complaint? Well, I'll just go ahead and tell you, I can't go backwards. Fifty, I think it was around fifty-five percent was me. Most of the time, people call and tell me that there's something wrong with their neighbor's place. I go out and look at it. Well, I can't tell them to fix it. If I look around the neighborhood and see three other places that have the same thing going on. So I do have to stop at the other places and ask them to fix it too. So that's why it's a little bit more than half the percentage is things that I've seen myself and have to take care of. So out of the four hundred and thirty-six, eighty-four are owner occupied. A hundred and sixty-four were occupied. That made up fifty-seven percent of the complaints. Businesses were nine percent. Vacant houses, buildings, and lots were thirty-five percent. These are some of the houses that have been knocked down this year. Some of them were due to fire. I still have to know when something has been caught on fire because I can get the insurance to move a little faster than otherwise. Because sometimes they'll sit there for a year or something. If nobody goes after them, they just soon not spend their money. Here's one example of what code enforcement can do. This house was condemned. It had burnt. That was what the back of it looked like. So it got demolished, had a nice clean lot, and a contractor come in and built a new house. So expenses for the year, I have places that I have to go mow or get my own mowed every two weeks, twelve to fifteen properties. Spent fifty-one hundred dollars doing that. And then there are properties that I have to get cleaned up, that I board them up. And with all the storms we've had this last year, there's brush removal. So that was five thousand and fifty dollars. Money that has been brought in, when somebody buys a property, they'll do a title check. And if they find out that there are liens on the property, they have to pay them off before the property can be sold. So lien fees are four hundred dollars. Interest on those liens, four hundred and eighty. Citations that have been paid, sixty-five hundred. Rehabilitated properties sold, that would be something that we've knocked down. And the city had the property and has been sold, was forty-five hundred, for a total of almost twelve thousand dollars. Fifty percent of the cases are resolved when I go out and put a brochure in the door or hang a door hanger. It tells them what is messed up and what needs to be fixed. I go back the next week, it's fixed. The other fifty percent gets the notices of violation. The ordinances are adopted by the city to promote the health and safety and protect its citizens. its citizens. Thank you for your commitment to make Glasgow a better place to live.
Thanks, Cheryl. At this point, I would enjoy any questions that the council might have for you. Cheryl has one of the most thankless jobs in the city because she has to make sure that people follow all these code ordinances that make our city look better, and it's not just to go by and throw a citation. She's gotta do a lot of research on who owns what. Is there any questions or anything you all have seen, or any questions about how these things work?
Cheryl, just a question to you. You've been doing this for a number of years now, and with your experience, how have we been progressing as a city? Are we improving in the number of violations, the type of violations, the collection, and the fines? Are we seeing improvements, the bottom line of this?
Yes. So over the last five years, we've knocked down, or not we, I've been able to work with the owners and get knocked down 60 houses, garages, whatever. So that right there is improving in the way our city looks. And then most of the time, you know, it's grass, it's junk on their porch, stuff like that.
Right. Okay. We appreciate the work you do.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cheryl. Any other comments or questions?
I'll just make a comment real quick. Thank you for all you do, even though I'm in your crosshairs frequently. You and I have got to be good friends, but I can't ever say you've been treating me unfairly at all, and you're very good at communicating, and I try to get better. So I'm a work in progress. But thank you for all you do, honestly.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Cheryl. Appreciate your time. We will move to our next annual presentation, and this is gonna be the annual presentation from the Plaza Theater. Ms. Carolyn Glaudfelder is the director of the Plaza Theater, and she's always got something to report. So Carolyn, the floor is yours.
Thank you all. I wanted to just start by thanking our volunteers, our staff members, and the advisory board, and everyone who supports the Plaza Theater. I've seen some of you, or most of those who left. But we hosted 51 events this year at the Plaza Theater in the past July 1st to June 30th. Five were Plaza-sponsored events, meaning we paid for them, and 46 were rental events, which we worked with local fundraisers, promoters, dance recitals, gamut theater, everything. And we have currently 24 already on the books for the 2425 fiscal year. So we're excited about that, and they just keep coming in. There's no Plaza events because I don't have any dates yet, so we're gonna fill, fit those in when I can. During the past budget year, we welcomed 17,406 patrons to the Plaza Theater. We had 1,148 from out of state, 8,144 from Kentucky towns and cities, and 8,114 from Glasgow, just Glasgow, not Barron County, but just Glasgow. So that's exciting. It's down slightly from last year where we had 19,000, but we did have the January, February, what I call Boilergate. So that took four events off the calendar. Two of those have been rescheduled into this upcoming fiscal year. One, we kept in the current fiscal year, and then one was canceled. So we will get those two back in this next one. Patrons who attended an event at the Plaza Theater during the last year ranged, came from 32 states plus Kentucky. We had Maine to California and everything in between. Far away is Alaska, the UK, Brazil, and Germany. We've, this year, we've seen more out-of-state visitors than from the previous year, which had 24. And I do have a list of all 32, but I don't think I really need to read all of those. That'll be in the minutes, I guess. Plaza membership, we do a Plaza membership every year, starting in July 1st to July 31st. It's $25 per seat. It's a great bargain. You get pre-notifications of all our upcoming events. You get to purchase your tickets in advance of them going on sale to the public, so you don't have to fight any public on-sale events. And at some sold-out shows, we will allow early access, a half-hour early access to the members, so they can come in early and get situated in their stuff. We currently have, so it's coming up July 1st, so mark your calendars, renewals, new members. I know some of you on the council are members. We had 113 members, which equated to 370 member seats. And that's way up from the previous year. We had 79 members, and that totaled 213 member seats. So we're just close to, like, doubling that 50% on membership. We currently have tickets on sale. We have coming up for this new year, Use Your Illusions, Guns N' Roses tribute on July 13th. Brawa is a new renter for us. We're happy to welcome them because they do so many great fundraisers in the community, and I'm glad they added us this year. They're gonna be doing Rock and Rescue with local bands Tail Dragger, Morale Code, and Trash Devils on August 10th. Those tickets go on sale Wednesday. We have Ronnie McDowell on sale. The Old Timers Reunion, which is another local organization that is utilizing the Plaza Theater for the first time, will be bringing in two comedians, Sweet Baby Kida and Meach Dog, and two local singers, Kalia Francis, who was also, she auditioned for, I believe, The Voice or Americans Got Talent, one of those, and Adrian Jay. That's on August 31st, so we're glad to have, we're happy to welcome them. The Mary Lou, Mary Lou Waller Scholarship Fund will present Lee Greenwood with the No Deposit Band on September 21st. We announced that today, and those go on sale Friday. We have a Johnny Cash Memorial Tribute featuring Benny Wiel, sounds just like Johnny Cash. Check him out. He's great. That's September 28th. Twitty and Lynn was one of the reschedules. That's now October 5th. And we have, all three of the Far Faraway Players productions are currently on sale, September 13, 14, 15. We have Murder on the Orney Express, October 25th, 26, 27. We have Little Shop of Horrors. And December 13, 14, and 15, we have A Christmas Story. And new this year, something that we worked with Far Faraway Players and to try to make it more of a community event, we have teamed up with George J's to offer a dinner show. So there will be, there will be limited dinner at George J's where you can buy your tickets from us for dinner and the show. You have dinner first. You walk down Plaza Way to the theater. That will be available Friday night, Saturday matinee, and Saturday night on the 13th and 14th. So we're really excited to utilize George J's and utilize downtown for dinner and to make it a little bit more exciting during the holiday season. Of course, we'll have community band back the night before the parade on that Friday night, 6th, I think it is. And then all this information can be found on our website, historicplaza.com, or just call me at the Plaza Theater, and we will guide you to what you need to come and see. And that's what I have. I was trying to make it short and sweet and simple.
Well, good report. Plaza is one of our shining gems here. We have, we get so many positive comments, and with all the wonderful things that's going on in the downtown area, it brings a whole different crowd to the downtown area because they love coming to the Plaza and experiencing downtown Glasgow. And I thank you for doing that and all the wonderful shows. You even had, what was this ghost thing we had down there?
You would be amazed. So I don't know if anybody watches Ghost Stories on Sci-Fi Channel or Ghost Hunt Weekends or any of that. So we had Steve Gonzalez, who is one of the hosts, and we had more people from out of state than we had local for that event. We had somebody could drive from Florida. We had Missouri. We had a lot of Ohio, Indiana, Illinois. He has a new book, and he talked about how he goes in and does these ghost hunts. And it was really fun and really interesting. He did videos. He brought in, we utilized the screen and video, and he showed some of the shows and explained, you know, what they were doing and how they were doing it. So it was really interesting. And so we're currently in the process of maybe doing a kind of a late-night ghost hunt at the Plaza, just to make it kind of fun. We're gonna bring them back and have them, like, I don't know, see what we can find. Because ever since they left, we've got really weird things going on. Doorbells, the thing in that we don't even have a doorbell. Don't know where that came from. So just some fun, just some fun things different. It was really different, and we really enjoyed it, and everyone who came really enjoyed it. It was really fun.
Any questions for Carolyn, from anybody up here? You've got some good volunteers, too.
We have great volunteers, the best. If anybody wants to volunteer, you're more than welcome. If anybody wants to come a Plaza member, you're welcome to have you. And, you know, supporting us is buying tickets to whatever we got, whether it's fundraiser for the community, or a theater, or a concert, or a show. They're all important.
Okay. Well, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Thank you for all that you do to make it a very fun place to visit. Next, we are going to move to our business and ABC department, which means that we've got Mr. Nick Hurt, who is in charge of that department, coming forward to talk about, give his annual report in business licensing and the ABC report. Nick, pull that microphone up there. You're a little taller than some of the other presenters, okay? That's good.
Does that work?
Yes, sir.
So I'm gonna go through the budgeted numbers and versus the realistic, what we realized in the last year. Quarterly tax withholdings budgeted was $9,775,000. The realized was $10,119,029.31. Quarterly tax withholding penalty and interest budgeted was $2,500. Realized was $1,554.37. Net profit fees, $2,375 was budgeted, $2,181,243.74 was realized. Net profit penalty and interest budgeted was $24,000. The realized was $25,731.40. Insurance fees, budgeted was $2 million. Year-to-date, realized was $1,928,178.85. The alcohol sales, budgeted was $650,000. Year-to-date was $669,713.52. Alcohol sales penalty and interest, $2,500. Year-to-date realized, $3,165.34. The total amount budgeted for those, for the quarterly withholding, net profit, insurance, and alcohol sales was $14,829,000. The realized was $14,928,608.53. As we'll go through the numbers, you can see that our net profits were down a little, not a lot, but a little. But our payroll, our quarterly withholdings, was up. Insurance was down, alcohol sales were up. We had a realized surplus of $99,608.53. So the net profit may have went down, and honestly, I kinda associate it with the higher payroll because the payroll is going to affect, affect the net profit. So it kinda zeroed itself out. Based on changes to the registration fee on January 1st of this year, we have had, and I need to change this because after I wrote it, I had someone come in and get a business license, we had 104 new businesses registered as of today. With the City of Glasgow at the new rate of $50, Mr. Mayor has asked me several times if anyone has made a comment, if they fussed about the new rate. Honestly, no one said anything. Even the people that already had a business license for something else, they'll come in and get a new one, and they'll say, oh, it's $50 now. Yes. No, most time they'll say, well, it probably should have went up. And they'll let it go at that. So everyone's been very open to that increase.
Good report. I know some people wanna ask a couple of questions. Terry, I can tell Terry's got a question down there.
I do. I'm sorry, Nick. I do have a question, but I would like to explain to the legislative body and to this audience about trend lines that you are seeing in the license fees. And I think it's important that people understand what's going on in your interpretation of the trends that we're seeing, the ups and downs.
Okay, as far as the net profits.
Net profits, occupational license fee, everything we're seeing in license fees, permits right now.
I'm seeing, and I did actually run the numbers compared to last year, the same timeframe, the businesses, as far as registered, is down a little, not much. I mean, 20 or 30 licenses. Honestly, it could go through a quick jump very quickly. We realized last year between July and December, we saw more business license gotten that time than we did the first part of the year. So it could change. I just did January 1 to June 24th, or actually 21st, and then I had somebody come in today and get one. We normally have at least one a day, sometimes two. Usually. It's very few days we go without somebody coming in and getting a business license. The trends as far as net profits, I actually see the net profits going down. And as they go down, like I said earlier, the quarterly withholdings payroll is going up. Because as you, as you pay your employees more, it cuts into your profit. So you'll see them kind of go and balance out overall. It's actually, in my mind, it's actually a good thing because that means that your people, your employees, the citizens of Glasgow, are getting paid more. And the companies, they're not seeing as much of a net profit, but the employees are seeing more. That's gonna put more revenue into local businesses, in my mind. That's what I say. Insurance fees, they did go up some from last year, but they're still below the $2 million that was budgeted.
I think it's imperative on this body that we realize how much the occupational license fees are as a part of our general fund. I mean, they're a huge part. They're over 50% of our revenues where it's being generated. So that's how important people working in our community is. And so when we talk about industry coming here, somebody opening a new business, all those are so, so important. An occupational license fee was generating that additional revenue to us because it's driving a lot of the activities, a lot of the city services that we're providing, and also the opportunity to keep those services at an affordable rate. So it is all about us making sure that we're providing avenues for people to work in our community. And that's important. The trend lines that Nick and we talk about in the finance committee meetings is where do we think we're headed with this? And the net profits is a little bit concerning. Occupational license fee may be up, but also net profits. People that operate businesses are being impacted by other costs. Payroll's a part of it, but they're also being impacted by other costs. And so our economy as a whole, you know, impacts us. We understand that. We know that. But just as a legislative body, when we're talking about revenue generation, Nick, his area has got a big part of our revenue for the city.
Those are wonderful comments, and it is important. And I'll tell you, up in City Hall, the main office of City Hall, when people, when people come in looking for the business license department, we gladly escort them right back there. So because we think it's, it's just a good feeling to have people interested in investing into our community. All right. Any other questions for Nick and any of the different hats that he wears? Good report, sir. Thank you very much. On the agenda, we have the report from our human resources and our risk management department, but that report is not ready for tonight. We'll move that to another meeting when we have the annual report from the risk management and human resources. And one more thing before we get into old business, Mona tells me that we did not vote on approving the minutes from the council meeting on June the 10th. So I would entertain a motion that you got a chance to look at those. Let's make it official. Does anybody from Council, Monarch, is there a second? Is there, we have a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, we are official and called up. So we need to do some old business right now. Rich, if you want to, we have several ordinances. Listen very carefully to these as they are presented. Several of these are on second reading, so they may sound familiar, but let's just listen carefully, okay?
Thank you, Mayor. The first one is an ordinance that amends our 2023 budget for the year July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024. I read it in its entirety at the last meeting, and I will summarize it for you. This budget amendment receives right at $860,000 of monies that are comprised of grant monies, proceeds from the sale of property, opioid settlement monies, and Entertain Glasgow sponsorships. And this budget amendment then appropriates from the budget right at $976,400 for the following: fire department equipment purchases, Plaza professional professional services, animal control overtime, work comp expenses, CLEF fund incentive expenses, street department tap ground grant improvements, entertain Glasgow concert expenses, landfill equipment rentals and repairs to the landfill. Again, those appropriations totaling nine hundred seventy-six thousand, four hundred dollars. This budget amendment ordinance will take effect upon its passage and publication according to law.
I'll entertain a motion that we pass this ordinance on second reading.
Motion.
Second, Lowry.
Okay, all right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the second reading of this ordinance? There being none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
That's right, that's right. We, here we are in voice votes. We need a voice vote to make this completely official.
Lowry?
Yes.
Marion?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Trig?
Yes.
Whitaker?
Yeah.
Baneal?
Yes.
Gont?
Yes, ma'am.
Kirkpatrick?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so the ordinance passes on second reading. Rich?
All right, Mayor, the next reading is a second reading of the upcoming budget for fiscal year July 1, 2024, June 30, 2025, establishing revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government. Whereas an annual budget proposal and passed and message has been prepared and delivered to the city council, and whereas the city council has received such budget proposal and made necessary modifications, now therefore be it hereby ordained by the city of Glasgow as follows. Section one, that the annual budget for fiscal year July 1, 2024, and ending June 30, 2025, is hereby adopted as follows. And again, I'm going to summarize this. I read it in its entirety at the first reading, but there are 24 line items, and the estimated carryover from last year's budget for those 24 items is thirty million, two hundred forty thousand, seventy-six dollars and thirty-seven cents. The estimated revenue coming from those 24 line items will, is budgeted at thirty million, sixteen thousand, thirty-six dollars. The estimated expenses for the upcoming fiscal year from those 24 line items is thirty-eight million, three hundred forty-one thousand, sixty-six dollars. And the estimated carryover fund balance after the end of next fiscal year is estimated at twenty-one million, nine hundred fifteen thousand, forty-six dollars, thirty-seven cents. Section two, this ordinance shall take effect as of July 1, 2024, according to passage and publication as required by law.
You've heard the reading of the ordinance, the second reading adopting the Glasgow annual budget. Is there a motion to pass the second reading?
Motion, Baneal.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
I'll ask the clerk for a roll call vote.
Marion?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Trig?
Yes.
Whitaker?
Yes.
Baneal?
Yes.
Gont?
Yes, ma'am.
Kirkpatrick?
Yes, ma'am.
Lowry?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance passes unanimously. Rich?
Mayor, the next item is an ordinance accepting Hudson Lane as a city street. That whereas Hudson Lane is located approximately 290 feet east of the Lexington Drive and Robert Bishop Road intersection and connects Robert Bishop Road and Herald Bishop Road in the city of Glasgow as shown on the Exhibit A drawing. Whereas a geotechnical report by American Engineers has been prepared and delivered to the superintendent of Public Works, and that report states that based upon core drilling and compaction tests, Hudson Lane meets the roadway development standards for the construction of streets in Glasgow. Whereas the superintendent of Public Works has inspected and approved Hudson Lane for inclusion as a city street in the city of Glasgow, and has sent his recommendation to the Joint City County Planning and Zoning Commission, who on April 15th of this year unanimously approved Hudson Lane for inclusion as a city street. Now therefore be it hereby ordained by the city of Glasgow as follows. Section one, Hudson Lane, which is approximately 760 feet in length and 50 feet in width, is hereby accepted and approved as a city street and part of its maintenance system. Section two, this ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law.
Second reading of the ordinance accepting Hudson Lane as a city street. I'll entertain a motion that we approve second reading.
Motion by Whitaker.
Okay, is there a second?
Second, Lowry.
Okay, a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Neil?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Trig?
Yes.
Whitaker?
Yes.
Baneal?
Yes.
Gont?
Yes, ma'am.
Kirkpatrick?
Yes, ma'am.
Lowry?
Yes.
Marion?
Yes.
All right, the ordinance is approved on second reading.
Next item, Mayor, is an ordinance prohibiting all cannabis business operations within the city limits of Glasgow. That whereas in 2023, the Kentucky General Assembly enacted legislation that establishes Kentucky's medical program with regard to marijuana. And the legislation is codified in Kentucky Revised Statutes, Chapter 218B. And whereas this new legislation provides at KRS 218B point 130, that Kentucky cities may elect to adopt an ordinance prohibiting all cannabis business operations within its territory. Now therefore, in light of the foregoing recitals be it hereby ordained by the city of Glasgow as follows. Section one, all cannabis business operations are hereby prohibited within the city limits of Glasgow, Kentucky. Section two, cannabis business as defined by KRS 218B sub 10-3 means any entity licensed under KRS 218B as a cultivator, dispensary, processor, producer, or safety compliance facility. Section three, this ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law.
All right, you've heard the second reading of this ordinance prohibiting all cannabis business operations within the city limits of Glasgow. I'll entertain a motion that we vote on this second reading.
Motion, Norris.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilman Norris. Is there a second? Second from Councilman Neil. All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on second reading of this ordinance?
Yes. You know, two weeks ago, we had a rather lengthy discussion on this, and I think it was good discussions from both sides. And, and I'll start by saying that the vote that I cast two weeks ago, when I left here, I was completely comfortable with that decision that I made. I had done my due diligence. I had talked to people in the community. And in the two weeks since then, I guess you would say democracy was at its best in terms of people in the community reached out to me on both sides of the issue. I continued to visit the Kentucky Medical Cannabis website and look at information. And, and my big drawback two weeks ago was the fact, I think I used the example, I was playing a game and I only knew half the rules. And I didn't feel comfortable committing the community to that kind of investment. But as I went through that and I started to look at the laws and regulations that were going to be placed on each of these, and you noticed the strike through language, that with every change they've made, they've made it a little more difficult for those people coming in. They increased the rigor on some of the things, not on everything, but enough that I felt more comfortable with information that I had. I received phone calls from people who, who are suffering from medical conditions that will require them to receive treatment. And, and none of this should be personal, but you know, as I drove two hours, as I've done for the last seven years, to get medication for my child who cannot get it at home because a company says no, I started just to dig through the information a little bit more, and I felt like I owed it to the people that I represent to explain why I had changed my mind this evening. And I had done my research last time, and I continue to do that. But you know, as a, as a teacher, I know that the more information you get, your viewpoint can change.
Chastity, thank you for that. That gives me cold chills hearing you talk about this. You know, two weeks ago, there was, there was some people on the council who really didn't know. They had questions. They had concerns, just as we do with these refugees that came, that are coming. We all have concerns. We had questions for them, but guess what? They're coming. So Glasgow, we have people here, we had a gallery full since last, two weeks ago, the meeting where Joe, myself and Mona elected to not prohibit marijuana. Man, Glasgow, y'all have spoken. You really have. And now you have people still here today. Come on, let's get on board. Cape City's already on board. If we don't do it, I have a very strong feeling Barron County's going to do it. I mean, the citizens have spoke, guys. That's what they want. And we are a voice for them, not for ourselves. Let's go.
Councilmember Lowry, I completely respect your, your words of wisdom that you just spoke, and it, it really touched my heart.
More discussion?
I didn't mean to give anybody like fuzzy feelings about it. It's just simply stated that we have a responsibility to the community, that, that what happened in the two weeks preceding the last vote is what should always happen, is that people call and you have conversations, that you reach out to us and you ask questions that lead us to ask questions. And, and that's why we're here. And I think all of us are willing to have those conversations, and, and they can be done in a cordial manner, whether we agree or not.
Absolutely.
That's our job, is, is to listen and, and learn.
Amen.
And it's okay to change your mind.
Further discussion on the issue?
I have just, and you know, a good discussion that we had two weeks ago and tonight comments, but then what I ask of this council is that, you know, there's a lot of rules and regulations that are happening with this. And when we look at this ordinance and we're voting to opt out, and we're giving our time to study this more and set processes in place and talk to people and look at the general management of this and the impact it's going to have on, on our city services and people that are going to be involved in the city. And opting out gives us a choice. And you know, where we can come back and look at this and talk to people in our city administration about its impact and the role it's going to have in our community. And I, I think by us opting out, we're making a prudent decision. We're not looking at saying we want people to drive X amount of miles. We've got to figure out what we can do, what we can manage. And if, you know, we move forward with this and we can't manage, then we've created a part of the problems that's going to be in administering this. And I don't be a part of that. I don't think anybody does. But we've got to look for a good solution for how we can implement it. And by opting out, all that we're asking for is time to look at this.
Councilmember?
There are several cities in the Commonwealth that have opted out. And one of the reasons for that is because they see the rules continue changing and the impact it's having on the citizens, especially inside the city government, so that we get it right, so it's a better program of administration and rulemaking and policing. So I was asking that we pause on this and we vote to opt out on this ordinance and agree with this ordinance.
Councilmember Baneal, can you explain what you mean by us being able to not manage?
You, you, you don't know what programs are going to be put in place. You don't know what the Commonwealth of Kentucky is going to mandate, what's going to come down for them that we as a local body, government agency is going to have to keep up with. We don't know all the particulars in the rulemaking, as we discussed two weeks ago, and the changes that just came down within a short period of time. So there's, there's unknowns to it. And if, and we opt in, we can't opt out. But if we opt out, we can opt in. So why would we not sit back and, and let it evolve? And then the city of Glasgow will respond to that.
I don't know about you, but I'm tired of sitting back.
But, 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 but there, this is a, this is a major program to be a ministry. And if we, we don't have the infrastructure in place to do it right, we're going to, we'll fail in a lot of ways. And I think we'll create more chaos and more harm than the help that it is intended to do. That's all I'm asking for.
It's my understanding that we have time to get all of that in place.
Well, it, it may be, but there, but your city government has to put programs in place. And so we're going to be taxing our city government to handle this. We can wait on this.
Terry, if we wait, like I said two weeks ago, we're going to be on the outside looking in. You know, the state has already mandated that 30 refugees can come. We don't know what that's going to do for us, but we're going to accept it, and we have to. So if we're going to trust our judgment with our state officials in that scenario, then by all means, let's take care of the people in Glasgow. It's going to be here anyway. And, and we already saw the net profits down. We love occupational licensing fee. We love it when they show up and come down the halls. It's more revenue for us. And what do we have? It's no different than someone opening a restaurant, selling clothes or bar. They're putting the money in. We're going to sit back and collect the taxes from it. So if it folds, that's on them, not us. Let's speak for the people. Anybody, since this has came out, I've posted social media, I promise you, not one person has said prohibit this. They all said that's what we want, and we are the people's voice, guys. We're not for ourselves up here. If we're not for the people, then why are we here?
You've got to look at this from a standpoint, you know, we represent the entire Glasgow community and its voices you hear that are saying, you know, vote against this. I hear voices that are saying vote for this, to opt out of it, because the opportunity for us to get it right when we do go with the program. And so that's democracy at the best. But I also want to say that when we look at this as a large revenue generator, there's probably not going to be much revenue, or if any revenue, that will generate from this. It'll be miniscule. So that's a tough cost. See, that's part of the initial contact that in our, in our licensing areas looked at, is that there is not a lot of fees in this. So, but, but that's a side point to it. What I'm trying to get, again, say to us as a body is to study it less, because when we opt in, we're in. We cannot opt out. If we opt out, we can opt in at a later date. And that, and to me, I'd rather do it right than do it and be wrong with it and cause, again, issues. I don't want to cause any issues.
But it's going to be, it's going to be here anyway, Terry. And another thing, that's going on the person who wants to be the cultivator, who wants to be the producer, who wants to be the dispensary. Unless you're filling out an application, it's not going to affect us, guys. It's them. They're putting, it's like a stock market. They're putting their money in and taking a chance. If it doesn't work out for them, I'm sorry, let's go to someone else. If they don't want to do it, then we're not in it for anything. We're just allowing them the option to be able to do that. And why we take that away from our people, guys, is beyond belief.
Councilman Norris has tried to jump in here. I've seen you hit your switch about four or five times. Go ahead, Freddie.
Well, the other night, my comment was to just take a deep breath and wait just a little while. I went by to talk to Kevin again today, and he was out of town, just to get his comments again and see if he had received any new message, any new changes. So we're back at the same situation we were. And so I'm going to stick with my thinking. Let's give it just a little bit more time. We're going, it's going to be done. And so what's going to hurt to wait just a little bit?
I heard somebody over here that was trying to say something.
I'd like to say a couple things, Henry. So sitting in these seats is never an easy vote. I mean, there's always pros and cons, and there's always people on this particular one. There are people that I've talked to that's really for it and there's people against it. So, you know, I think you've just got to come down to where your constituents are. If I'd been here two weeks ago, and I, trust me, the meeting was a whole lot easier riding in the car with my son, not being able to vote than it, than it would be tonight. But two weeks ago, I would have voted not to let it come in because I just didn't think we had enough information, getting information on Wednesday and, and going, making a vote on Monday. Like Chaz, I spent more time than I would want to admit to y'all, speaking to medical pharmacy people. It's not overwhelming either way. You know, I mean, you have as many loud voices on one side as other. My personal story is, I almost died from oxycodone. My personal story is, I almost died from Oxycontin and Percocet, and, you know, part of that was chemotherapy and radiation with cancer, but the big vast majority of it. Even my dad, who was a Baptist deacon, said, "I wish you'd get on medical marijuana and get away from the pills." So, two weeks ago, I would've voted to not let Glasgow have it. Today, I'll be voting to opt into the system. It's not 100% correct, it's not 100% done, but it's probably never gonna be. We can always wait and opt in later. I get all that. I'll burn a lot of friends tonight, that's okay, but for me, I gotta do for the man in the mirror, and so that's where I am.
All right. Any more? Joe, you got something?
Yes, I will not elaborate on everything that I talked about the last time. One thing to me that seems to be missed is, is whether we like it or not, our legislature in our country is leaning in a direction where they've declared medical cannabis medicine. I talked with some doctors and some pharmacists over this last two weeks, and there's no common ground between the ones for and the ones against, and we were comparing penicillin, aspirin use, and the whole nine yards, and then we go to, like Mr. Gons talked about, the use of Oxycontin to eliminate pain. So it's gonna be an issue. The state has already shown a tendency to lean to the far right, and they're tightening this rule up more and more every day, but in the very end of the game, anyone who gets a medical card will be able to acquire medical cannabis as their medicine, and there is nothing we can do about it. So what we can do is, I think, since I've been a, everybody knows I've been an advocate for it, for if you're using it for the right reasons, and those who have a need for it, they need to be able to acquire it, and I don't think they should, it should be a burden on them to acquire their medicine. And I do believe the doctors and the pharmacists, and over time, we might come back later and say, hey, we made a mistake, but that's what the legal system does, is it makes mistakes and we adjust accordingly. We don't have the rules in place now. We have six months to put those rules into place, and even if we put the rules in place, there's no guarantee, or there's nothing saying we're gonna get a dispensary, or a cultivator, or a processing center. The mayor and I was in Bowling Green this past week. I was just going out and said, the governor was there, and his staff, and some of their staff was concerned about if we really feel we should restrict folks, or yes or no, then why don't we do what other states have done, is put it on the ballot? And our fear is, is that the community would lean forward, like they've done unofficial polls, and they say it might be 72% will probably vote for medical marijuana. So our fear to allow the community to make a decision, then we have to look at it and say, all right, it's here. What do we do as a legislative body to make sure we're taking care of the people who are gonna acquire it, and also to take care of our city, to make sure that we have the police support, we have the fire department support, and we have the rules in place? Money shouldn't matter, revenue shouldn't be the issue when we're talking about medicine. And none of us know what tomorrow brings, but if it brings chronic pain, hallucinations, PTSD, cancer, and those kind of things, we don't wanna all of a sudden change our mind and say, all right, where am I at on this? So, community members have come to all of us. We've all heard from different sides, and, you know, this and that, and I believe that I would, I'm gonna stay the same as I have been as a vote, nay, against restricting it, because I don't, the odds are very, we may get one dispensary, but take what Bowling, what was said in Bowling Green. Say Bowling Green says no. That's the largest, fastest growing metropolitan area in the state of Kentucky. So now, four medical cannabis facilities have to go somewhere in our region. As we speak, Cave City is the only one that has stood up. So what we would end up with, this is the fear in Bowling Green, is that Cave City ends up with four medical cannabis pharmacies or dispensaries, and the residents of Bowling Green now have to drive to Cave City. And their concern was really not about revenue, but the impact of that distance of driving. We're human. If you in pain, you gonna smoke a joint in Cave City, you may be impaired by the time you get to Bowling Green. Same way it used to be with alcohol when we were coming from Bowling Green, thanks. So it's gonna be interesting to see how they vote, but for us, we should be thinking along the same lines of what do we want for our people? Not really us as a legislative body, but the citizens that we're being asked to take care of.
I think information is powerful, regardless of what side of the debate you're at on this, but the Kentucky Medical Cannabis website provides a lot of valuable information for even members in the community about how you're gonna go about going to a practitioner and getting an application and submitting that to the state, and what those rules look like for individuals, and then you're able to see what the rules look like for each level of application for people interested in it. It shows you zones where these cannot go within 1,000 feet of a school or a daycare, and you can find phone numbers, email addresses for all the doctors, nurse practitioners, and pharmacists who serve on the state board. And so, for people, regardless of which side you're on, if you have questions and you want information, sometimes it's best to go to the experts on it instead of depending on what you hear other places. And so, that is the state website, kentuckymedcan.gov.
Mayor, can I call the question?
Yes, I think we should. We've had good discussion, this is really good discussion, to vet some of these things we have before us, but I do think we've had plenty of time to discuss it, so we will call the question.
Mayor, prior to that, can I add one thing?
Okay.
So we are voting to prohibit.
Right. If you vote yes, you will be voting yes to prohibit all cannabis business operations within the city limits of Glasgow, Kentucky. If you vote no, you will be voting not to prohibit all cannabis business operations within the city limits of Glasgow, Kentucky. Is that the way that I understand it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we've called the question, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Norris.
Yes.
Trigg.
Oh.
Witcher.
Yes.
Yes.
Gons.
No.
Kirkpatrick.
No, ma'am.
Lowry.
No.
Marion.
No.
Neal.
Yes.
All right, what is the?
Five no's.
Five no's and four yeses. So the ordinance, the second reading of the ordinance fails. So we do not any longer have an ordinance prohibiting all cannabis business operations within the city limits of Glasgow, Kentucky. So at that point, we will have to defer to our city attorney. What we have is, we did not pass this ordinance, so I guess the next thing that we would do would be to create an ordinance to opt in?
The way the statute is written, unless you opt out, you're opted in.
Okay, all right, so there's no more action that needs to happen?
No more action needs to be taken.
Okay, all right, okay, very good. So it was five no's and four yeses. Okay, all right, very good. Good discussion. That's what we're here for. Okay, so we've got some more ordinances to take care of here, Rich, and if you all will be very patient, because every one of these are as important as the ones we've considered already.
Next two ordinances, Mayor, are annexation and zoning ordinance. The first one is an ordinance annexing into the corporate limits of Glasgow certain property containing 5.53 acres, more or less, located at 2420 New Bowling Green Road in Barron County, owned by Clarence and Connie Francis, and it establishes a B3 zoning classification for that. The consents have been attached. The Joint City-City Planning and Zoning Commission have met, recommended that the annexation and the zone establishment be approved.
Okay, you have heard the second reading of these ordinances. I will entertain a motion that we approve them. Okay, from Councilman Neal. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, this is the second reading, so let's have a roll call vote on these. Mona?
Trigg.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
Bynell.
Yes.
Gons.
Yes, ma'am.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes, ma'am.
Lowry.
Yes.
Marion.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Norris.
Yes.
Okay, those two ordinances, second reading, have passed.
Just for clarification, that was the first one I read.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought, okay.
This is the second one. This is the second ordinance annexing into the city limits of Glasgow, 0.608 acres, located at 2384 New Bowling Green Road in Barron County. This property is owned by Universal Estates LLC, and it also establishes at the same time a B3 zoning classification. Again, consents from the property owners are attached. The recommendations of the Joint City-City Planning Commission are that the annexation and the zoning be approved.
Like the other ordinance, I'll entertain a motion that we approve this annexation.
Motion.
From Councilman Neal?
Second, Bynell.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, call the roll. Clerk?
Witcher.
Yes.
Bynell.
Yes.
Gons.
Yes, ma'am.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes, ma'am.
Lowry.
Yes.
Marion.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Norris.
Yes.
Trigg.
Yes.
All right, the ordinance passes unanimously. We have some municipal orders to take care of here.
First municipal order is appointing Thomas Grubbs to the Board of Adjustments to fulfill the unexpired term of Shannon Rust. This appointment is for a two-year term, expiring June 30, 2025, adopted today's date by the Glasgow City Council.
I'll entertain a motion that we adopt this municipal order.
Motion, Lowry.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Neal, any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The municipal order is approved.
Next municipal order appoints Debbie Livingston, actually reappoints her, to the Glasgow Economic Development Loan Fund Board. This appointment is a two-year term, expiring June 30, 2026, adopted by the council today's date.
All right, I will entertain a motion that we pass this municipal order.
Motion.
From Councilman Marion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Councilman Norris, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Black sign. The municipal order passes.
Next municipal order reappoints Melissa Gibson to the Glasgow-Barron County Tourist and Convention Commission as a lodging representative to the commission for the city of Glasgow. This appointment is a three-year term, excuse me, expiring June 30, 2027, adopted by the council today's date.
All right, you have heard the reading of the municipal order, appointing, reappointing Melissa Gibson to the tourist commission. I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second, is there a discussion on this? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries, or the ordinance passes, is what I'm trying to say.
This is the next municipal order. It reappoints Gomez Garcia to the Glasgow-Barron County Tourist and Convention Commission as a lodging representative for the city of Glasgow. Again, this is a three-year term, expiring June 30, 2027, adopted today's date by the Glasgow City Council.
All right, you have heard the reading of the ordinance approving Ally Gomez Garcia to the.
Motion, Lowry.
From Lowry, second, from Marion. All right, any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The order is approved.
And the last one, Mayor, is a municipal order reappointing Thomas Grubbs to the Joint City-City Planning Commission of Barron County as a representative for the city of Glasgow. This is a four-year term, expiring June 30, 2028, adopted today's date by the Glasgow City Council.
Motion, Bynell.
Okay, all, any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Municipal order carries. All right, we have several important things to talk about, listen very carefully. Tomorrow, the eastbound lane of West Main Street from the Glasgow Square to Liberty Street will be closed to through traffic, starting at 8:00 tomorrow morning and going until 4:30 tomorrow afternoon. The westbound lane will remain open. This is the starting, getting ready to begin on Wednesday with the demolition of the city property right there on West Main Street, across from the Arts Center on West Main Street. So just be aware of that. If somebody says, why is traffic running a little bit slow? Well, we need that lane closed over there in front of that building to begin the process. We'll have, on Wednesday, we'll have some complete closures down through there, because we want to be very safe in that demolition activity down there. The second thing I want to do is really tell you, so we can pass along to the neighbors, because this is part of what we hear a whole lot about, on the use of fireworks. There are very strict rules on using fireworks in the city of Glasgow. Consumer fireworks can only be used from June 28 through July 5. That's June 28 through July 5, and it can only be used between the hours of noon and 11:00 p.m. That's noon and 11:00 p.m. So make sure that you share that with somebody, because that's really important. We, a lot of people say, well, I didn't know we had rules, or I didn't know what time we were supposed to, or what days it can be. It's the 20th of June through the 5th of July, from noon until 11:00 p.m. It's that simple. And also, coming up on Friday night, we've got the continuing series for Entertain Glasgow. It's gonna be Tyrone Dunn and Kenfolk in concert right out here on the Glasgow Public Square. It's absolutely free, the gates open at 5:00 p.m. Should be a huge crowd and a very exciting evening.
Hey, and Henry, just, Tyrone and them will be, I'm sorry, will be great, but Bazooka Joe, there's a big following.
Okay, all right.
In the community, I think they're opening up for Tyrone Dunn, just that one.
All right.
Yeah, they are. Bazooka Joe 2.0 will start at 7:00.
Okay.
And then Tyrone Dunn will start around it.
And Joe?
Sir, I have a question on the, is Saturday the 6th? Because usually what would end up happening is, is the weekend. You stand more of a chance of 4th of July barbecue's being held on Saturday, you know, over the weekend, so normally this timeframe covers that aspect. Do we need to add two days?
To the?
Yeah, to the 6th, or the, which would be to Sunday.
The fireworks?
Yes.
It's in an ordinance, I don't think we can just change it.
Yeah.
The calendar.
Yeah, it's in an ordinance at this point. It's, that's the way that it always is.
Right. So I guess, so there's.
I don't really know of any way that, since it is an ordinance.
Nothing we could do tonight. I mean, you could.
Yeah. All right, did that answer the question, Joe?
Sorry.
Okay, all right.
And Mayor, if we get people calling us about the fireworks, do we just tell them to call the police, or what would be the right procedure if we get people calling us?
I'm looking back at the police department as we speak.
I think the ordinance is pretty clear that if they're caught violating the ordinance, law enforcement actually can be checked.
All right.
Hopefully this is common sense.
Yes, that's right. But it's just good, but I think it's good that we all, as members of the legislative body of the city, should know that. body of the city, should know that if somebody calls you, we should be able to quote it right back to them. We shouldn't say, well, I don't know, because we do know.
And it's in the paperwork.
It's in the paperwork, okay. All right. Also want to, let's see, let's talk some more about celebrations. The 4th of July celebration, city offices are going to be closed on the July 4th holiday, that's a Thursday. On Friday night, the 5th of July, we have downtown, the community band is going to present a concert on the square. If you remember how wonderful it was last year, they've been practicing, and we're going to have them on the Glasgow Square on Friday night, the 5th day of July. And then be ready, coming back on the 10th day of July, which is a Wednesday, the Louisville Orchestra is once again coming to Glasgow. And let me tell you, those musicians love coming to Glasgow. We always show them a lot of love, and they're going to put on a heck of a show. They've been excited about coming here. So put that on your calendar for the 10th, which is going to be on Wednesday. We have recycling on the 6th day of July, from 8:00 AM until 11:30 at the Regional Landfill. If you hadn't seen, the really nice new recycling facility, you can come out there and check that out. And then we're going to be meeting again here at the council chambers for our next regularly scheduled meeting at 6:00 PM on the 8th day of July. Now, we also have, let's see, okay, all right, that's not an issue. Okay, all right, well, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn, I really, it's important, and it's pleasing to see that we have important things to talk about, and we have the fortitude to sit here and discuss it and come to consensus on the way that we need to move forward. So our motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Have a nice evening.